Call the meeting to order. Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Ms. Dackerty.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Coniker.
Here.
Ms. Metzler.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Ms. Prickett. Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
And we'd like to take a second to formally, or formally acknowledge Ms. Dackerty for stepping up to serve the community. So thank you very much. Moving on, we, the next item on the agenda, approval of minutes of the Facility Committee meeting and the work session of May 12, 2025, and the Policy Committee meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, and the regular meeting of May 19, 2025. Need a motion?
So moved. A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. Next on the agenda is visitors' comments for agenda items only. Please state your name and municipality.
Jim Lance, Highland Township. Good evening. I noticed on the agenda here under number 10 and B, it says that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved a resolution establishing a real estate millage of forty-three point forty-six mills in Chester County and twenty-five point ninety-four mills in Lancaster County. What is it now? Can you tell me? Is this an increase or a decrease?
It's a balancing between the counties, so that it's a complicated formula that the state gives us. And so because, because assessment rates in counties change, we have to balance them each year. And so that's what this, so there's no tax increase, it's just a balancing of the taxes.
Okay, I just wanted to encourage you. We are the highest taxed millage, I think, in Chester County. And so I just wanted to urge the board to consider the taxpayer. Because, you know, there's lots of advocates for schoolteachers and for those that benefit from the budget. But there's not as many advocates for the taxpayers, so I just wanted to encourage the board members to consider, there are people that are challenged with their school taxes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, Jim, real quick, I know this isn't an exchange, but the school, this is a zero percent tax increase from our end.
Okay.
What he explained is the rebalancing and the way the counties work on annual assessments drives that number. So we did not-
So it could be higher, you're saying?
We didn't raise our millage, we didn't put in a tax increase for this, for the budget, for this, for twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, this is driven by sources out, forces outside of our control.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, presentations and discussions. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lever.
Well, I would like to introduce our representatives from communities and schools. We'll have them come up. This is Magdia, Xavier, Xavier, and Dom. So we can pull up two more chairs. So we are, we're pleased to have CIS with us tonight to talk about the programming that they've put in place. We got a late start, particularly at the intermediate school with Dom. And so we'll be transitioning next year to CIS services being in the middle school, which is half of the students that Dom was working with this year. And Xavier will also be working with the high school kids again. So Magdia, go ahead and take us through your presentation.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Again, Magdia Garcia, and we're actually transitioning a little bit with our agencies, so I will have either direct support for these sort of individuals who want to be open next to it when it comes to community and school. First, we do have the implementation to start a little later in the year. What we're doing is we're really working on building meaningful relationships with students at both schools. Where they're assisting with transition between students in the eighth grade will now, or eighth grade will transition now to ninth grade. We have some of those fifth, sixth graders that need, that made over to Dom here. Some of the different things that they do are restorative practices. Other things are supplementary work, not planning, supplementary work to things for counselors, for social workers, and other agencies that are currently in the school. So they are the different people that are interested in where they're working. Some of the projected implementation-
Okay. There you go. Sorry, I already went through that. Some of our projected implementation, we're working partnership with school counselors to do a lot of the tier one, which are whole school supports, as well as some of our tier two. You'll hear a little bit about some of those groups that have already started occurring in our schools. So for us, tier one are whole school supports. And for us, tier twos are those small groups that are meant for case managed students. So some of the groups that have already occurred are tier one groups. So they're open to all students. There are tier three, but I want to clarify that our tier three, one-to-one supports, are non-therapeutic. They're not clinical, okay? Some social behavior conversations are occurring. Our folks have been really, doing really well in looking for resources. We were just chatting about all the resources that we're looking for partnerships over the summer. And they also have through two LCs at each grade level as well. So based on our prioritization of need, we're determining what's through our annual assessment process and collaborating with the schools, what some of those additional resources will be. Each can manage up to sixty students, particularly at the middle school, will be the middle school, and at the high school, so they'll have their own sixty student caseload. The caseloads are fluid, so students can be on the caseload for a quarter, or they can remain on the caseload year to year. It really is determined by the student's need, as well as the team. So the middle school projected has some needs assessment process that will happen over the summer, so we're going to meet with our principal. And they're going to help us determine in a collaborative effort, looking at district data, looking at school improvement plans or annual plans, and some of the observational data that he's collected in the last thirty days that you've been with us, and work on a needs assessment that will then provide supports within a plan we call our school support plan. Some of that will include the school-wide PBIS initiatives. Also restorative practices, because all of our folks are trained in restorative practices, developmental relationships, and youth mental health first aid. So everyone's trained in that, and we'll be identifying some of the gaps of that process, some of the current things that are going really well, and see where we can continue to support. The high school implementation, we have Xavier. And she started in February, which still is a pretty late start. We did an assessment on her, I just want to put that out there, and with the students. And out of a scale of one to five, I have a four point seven one, she rated as supportive. The students rated CIS altogether on a five-point scale, four point five seven for having, supporting the motivation to attend school. And four point two nine on a five-point scale to say they developed a sense of belonging to be in school. Just a little bit on the small amount of students we were able to touch this year. The goal for CIS is to continue, at the high school, continue to decrease the amount of class cuts. We talked about that thoroughly, and some steps that we can implement next year as well. She's built positive rapport with students, you can see by the numbers. And currently, she had a caseload of five, which we'll get into a little bit more, with the late start and the referral process we have to fine tune. I think that'll drastically change. But overall, with some of the tier one groups, we effectively touched thirty students and served them through some of the groups that we'll get into. Grit for girls rising together, and then greatness, resilience, and tenacity is for the boys group, right? So she provided some additional supports through basic needs in collaborating with a couple of other agencies in the area and programs. So the wardrobe, new morning, and she had parents donating their time to do some supports for prom, which I thought was really great, too. The end of the year report will reflect actual numbers. We're still gathering some of that from the school. So what it will reflect are some things like the number of students with class cuts and the percentage that decreased those cuts. But soon as school's out and everybody gets their data in, the reports will be run, and we'll be able to provide that, and we'll have that end of the year meeting, I believe, coming up twenty-third, twenty-s, soon. So also at the high school, we provided input and attendance to the different teams that are in that school. I think it's really important that CIS partakes and participates, or even just sit back and listen in those groups so we can plan appropriately. We did some co-facilitating with the school admin on the Shout program as well. And partnerships, again, we had collaboration with the Point, formal introduction with Evolve, Chester County, OIC, Penn Crest High with their BSU, and Second Century Alliance. And once we're done, they can answer any questions pertaining to those particulars. I want to look at the little bit of data here that we still have. Again, school-wide data is pending, we should have those numbers shortly. But through some of the Grit program, there were five, twenty-five students served, particularly in that program. Five students were case managed. So we do collect data on the referrals, who's referring, when they refer, how they refer. And then we also have students that sometimes decline. They don't necessarily want the service, and we're okay with that. We're going to move on and move to the students that want the services. So at this point, one referral came directly from the school, and five referrals went directly to Xavier. And five of those students ended up case managed. Through the attendance, through, all of our students are provided goals, their individual support plans. And sometimes they have all three areas. Sometime, this particular situation, each student had one goal, so that we can just monitor something for the moment. So three students had an attendance goal. One made progress. We know that we wanted all three to make progress, but one making progress, we're going to celebrate that anyway. And the other two, that gives us information and data to see what do we need to work on with those particular students so we can get them to progress. A behavior goal, we had one student with suspensions that was monitored, and that student made progress, and academic student also made progress. So they increased their grades and were able to get back on track with credit accrual. So students from the Grit group were also surveyed before and pre and post, and we'd like to see what their thoughts are on the work that we're providing them. And so just to throw that in there, how to handle stress on a scale, again, of one to five, we find it so much easier for students, and they're more responsive when you just keep it short and give them too much, and they won't respond. So how to handle stress, four point two-two out of five said that they were able to increase how they handle, or better handle stress. Building positive relationships, I had four point six-seven out of five was the score for building positive relationships. And taught me how to utilize life skills, it was four point three-three out of five. So again, I don't know if they're a little biased because they really like our coordinator, or if it's because the work was really great and the efforts put in for that Grit program. And there are commentary as well from the students that the most liked was the learning, that it was hands-on activities. What they would like to learn was really good input as well. Things from handling anger, they want to learn a little bit more math, so they want some math support. That's good to know. And building friendships was also something, building relationships, I'm sorry, something else they want to learn. So also, some opportunities upcoming. What have we identified as areas of need thus far? We really know that we have to continue to support the school in working on the class eloping. Found a lot of numbers about students being in bathrooms instead of in class, so we're working on that. I want to add some other things. We know that we have to build more relationships within the school, that's been clearly identified. What will the next school year entail? We're going to start streamlining some of those referrals, get a little bit more detail oriented on what the referrals look like. In order to do that, we kind of have a plan. We really have to go in and utilize the summer to talk to folks, have them understand what CIS is and how we can, how they can refer students. Big thing, we're talking about PBIS, right? That's all about initiatives to incentivize students. And so we're coming up with a lot of things to do there, which will include different departments in the school. And then more enrichment and motivational opportunities for students, so they are in class and not elsewhere. Attendance is often measured as it's going to be reflected of the student's behavior and the school climate. So we will have a new goal as well for the upcoming school year to include attendance. Behavior, so chronic absenteeism will be a measure. And behavior goal will also be, because we're noticing the students who are not getting the class are, tend to be some behavior students. So we're getting more data involved in that to justify the school goals. And we're going to use the summer to also improve communication so we can ensure appropriate alignment to the school teams, and sharing more about CIS work with teachers, counselors, social worker, and whoever else wants to hear it, I'm willing to give the information. So that is the basis of what CIS has done in the last three months at the high school level and last thirty days, the middle school level. Open to questions? Thank you.
I have a question. For those who are watching, you might not know what that means, CIS. Can you just explain that real quick?
Yeah, so we're Communities and Schools of Eastern Pennsylvania. We provide ISS support, so integrated student supports. Really, we're working with any students that the schools and our teams might designate as needing just some additional support, whether it is academic or attendance, behavior. We also like wellness and career, college-bound students as well. We have all these initiatives we want to work with, with the school, to remove barriers so students can be successful.
Another acronym question. You mentioned Shout was one thing that you had implemented. Can you tell us what that is also?
I'll leave that to Zach.
I can't remember what the acronym is, but what Shout is about? It's a group of students who get to come together in the morning before school, and they just talk about like different things, like they're kind of like the voice of like the student body. They let us know things that are going wrong, or how they feel, or what ways we can make the school better. Anything that they feel, you know, we should add or do. We also come together and do like different events, like we had an Easter egg hunt. We plan different activities just to kind of like give them something to look forward to and just make sure that the school has good climate.
So I have a question for two, one, for each of you. What is the thing that you saw was the greatest strength that you saw in the students or the school? And what is a challenge that you identified that you're looking to maybe approach next year?
Do you want to go first? I'd say the greatest strength would be that they can do the work. It's just, they do it on their own terms. And if you're able to kind of like work around that and kind of come down to their level and meet them, they will do it. They will do it, they will be respectful kids, they will be nice to you, they will do anything that you want them to do. You just have to approach them differently, you just have to have different conversations with them. And it just can't always be like what's in the book. Sometimes you gotta go around that. I feel like it's just a different time, these kids are very different, they're even different from me, and I'm young. But you can get them to do it, and they really can do the work. Like I've seen one of my students do a complete three sixty, like she allowed me to like display in my office her attendance. From the first day she started working with me to the last, and she was a student that would not work with me. When I first met her, she was like, no, I'm not talking to you. She would not come to me, anything, and now I can't get her to leave me alone. But she has not skipped. She doesn't skip anymore. She may, she might not be in the classroom all the time, but she's not in the bathroom. She's accounted for, she's with an adult. I've built a sense of trust with her, I've gotten her grades. When I first met her, her highest grade was a twenty-five. She passed all of her classes for the fourth market period, and I did so much makeup work and things with her that she's able to go to the next grade next year. And the next year, we can start off on a good start, and just her having me and just being able to stay on top of her to get everything done. One of my other students, she needed to make up two English classes in a month to graduate twelfth grade. And, you know, everyone told her she couldn't do it. I came up with a plan with her, created a chart, checked in with her every day. At the end of the day, I broke it down, the number daily. They told her she had to do two hundred and sixty-four parts of something. I broke it down where it was six a day. You can do it. She did it, she's graduating. So they can do the work. Something to work on, I guess, would just be, like I said, everyone being on the same accord and just realizing that things are different now, you have to approach things differently. In the end, we all want the same results, which is for all these kids to be successful. I think we just gotta figure out different ways and just stick to them and not, you know, have in our minds it has to be one way.
Thank you.
Yes, on my end, I had a little younger group this time, fifth and sixth graders. I think the challenging part is that some of these kids are just not willing to be open about- about a lot that's going on with every single individual or staff member around. However, just a little supportive, restorative group that I did for some of those troubled kids that were suspended from field day, they have a sense of, they know what they want, but they don't have the relationships to get there yet, whether that be peer-to-peer or staff to themselves. It was really interesting because fifth and sixth grader, usually ones on the top, ones on the bottom, so they don't really come into contact much. But those students, I was just able to implement something as little as uno to get them all that came together and then they all were able to, I was able to throw in questions that made them think and made them actually know that somebody wanted to hear from them. And it just changed their whole perspective of, not only myself, but communities and schools. So I think that's what I'm looking forward to most, being able to work the three grades now instead of just two.
Thank you. Relationships are paramount.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to achievement update. Looks like Dr. Leaver's gonna lead the discussion.
So for those of you who were with us at the end of last year, we, you know, there's a, there's something called the Heisenberg Principle. It's, it comes out of a kind of philosophy and sociology, but the Heisenberg Principle says, the more emphasis you place on any one indicator, the less reliable it becomes as an indicator. So if if all I, if all I focus on is one thing, it actually is less reliable as an indicator, as opposed to using that one thing and then looking at several other things, it it becomes a lot more clear. So I wanna just take a moment to to show you the the most recent results from MAP because this is a thirty thousand foot view, it's not about individual students. But it's, it's the goal that we have to to have our students gaining against the national percentiles. And so I wanna, I wanna just show you a little bit, this, if you were, if you were here last year at the end of the year is probably April, I think we showed, cause we had MAP results earlier last year. So what you see is, this is the primary learning center and you see, if we look at kindergarten, that's the the RIT score, the one forty-one, one fifty-one, one sixty-one is the score that is generated by the MAP test. Now MAP is a computer adaptive test. So what that means is, every student who takes the test will miss half the questions. But if they miss a question, it will seek a level that they can be successful at. If they are, if they, if they answer one correctly, it will keep moving, it'll, it'll look for what is their grade level, what is the level that they're finding success at. All students will miss questions. And so they don't necessarily know whether or not they're doing well. Where, where they can determine that they're doing well is if they start to see things they haven't seen before. Because they will actually see the same, some of the same questions. And it's interesting, kids who really, really dive into these, they'll say, yeah, I didn't know how to do that last time, but this time I knew how to do it. And so the, so the RIT score is the top one. The, the middle score there, if you look at the kindergarten, the percentile, that is where we would rank, where our students as a group would rank in the national percentile. So looking at kindergarten, they started the year in the fifty-first percentile and then moved to the fifty-fourth and then the sixty-fourth percentile. That's incredible growth. And so the, I use this metric because it shows us, we can, we can be growing, but actually losing ground against their their peers across the country. So that's, this is, it's, it's a thirty thousand foot view. It doesn't tell us that much about individuals, it just tells us overall in our comprehensive plan, our goal is tier one instruction and that we want tier one instruction to be increasingly rigorous. And one of the indicators that it is, it is rigorous is that our kids are actually gaining against the national percentile. So this is the primary learning center, you can see kindergarten did really, really well in math. And then the, kind of the red is an indicator that, well, we actually lost, we showed growth, if you look at kindergarten, I'm sorry, grade one, we showed growth from one sixty-two to seventy-eight, which is good growth, but it is not, it's not enough to to grow against the national percentile. So when you look at the elementary school, this is, this is really pretty phenomenal. Third grade starting in the fortieth and finishing the year at the fifty-eighth in math. Fifty-first for fourth grade, finishing the year in the sixty-first percentile. In reading, reading is much harder to grow and so you don't often see the gains in reading that you can see in math, but from the forty-fourth percentile to the forty-sixth percentile in third grade and then fourth grade from the forty-eighth to the fifty-fourth. And and this is, this is exciting because what it's showing us is that our kids are, they're, they're making movement that's beyond just one year. They're, they're, it's not just one year's growth if they're, if they're leapfrogging, you know, other groups of students in in the national percentiles. The intermediate school, we see in sixth grade, good growth again. It's, it's, we, we of course would love to see all of those numbers in the, you know, sixtieth percentile, but it takes some time to get there. So in sixth grade, we see really good results. Fifth grade, not quite as much, a little more, a little more stagnant across the the year. Reading started sixth grade pretty strong, but then fell off pace. Now, again, if if we just said MAP is the only thing that's important, there's a lot of things we could do to teach kids to take the MAP test. That's not the point. We're not trying to generate MAP scores. We're trying to use MAP to tell us how we're doing in our tier one instruction. And so the reason why this is so exciting is because our, our teachers in a building will see that another grade level is is having success and the question becomes, well, why? What, what are you doing that's different than what we're doing? Why are your kids having the success? We also get to see cohort groups. So as a group moves from first to second to third, there will be different levels of growth. And what we wanna see is, we wanna see this upward trajectory everywhere. So the intermediate school, five and six. The middle school, seventh grade reading, started the year quite strong. Another thing that is, that is kinda key that that you learn is what, one of the things that that happened in the, in the elementary school was, they really celebrated the whole idea of taking the assessment. Because we need the students to take it seriously and do the best that they can because otherwise all of our indicators don't mean anything. So if we give the test at a time that, I mean, it's, this is really hard on, this year we delayed, do you remember the beginning of the year, we didn't have our Chromebooks? And so we delayed and that changed our whole testing schedule for MAP because we couldn't do it as early as we wanted and it pushed it later in the year. And so we had students, not, not, I don't think middle school students, but we had high school students that were testing in the last week of the year. And those results are are not as good, you'll see them in a moment, but I'm also not sure is that, is that a really good indicator? If if we are questioning whether it's, you know, the best environment, whether it's the best time of year, whether we have promoted the test in a way that that kids are giving us their best. So here's the high school scores. Algebra II students, it's, it's harder to grow once you're in the, you know, above the fiftieth percentile, but but showing growth there. This, the tenth grade algebra II is one that I would question whether we got their best effort in that last, that last testing session. Same thing with tenth grade in algebra I, where I, I don't know that our students would have regressed that much, but this is the data that we want our teachers to be looking at and we want them to understand, this is the target. We want to see this growth against the national norms and we've seen it in a number of places. This is reading at the high school, this is, this is the one that was taken in the last, the last week of the year. And I don't, we, we have to be very deliberate in how we're doing this and how we're planning and scheduling so that we're getting the best possible read that we can. So just wanted to give you a snapshot, I had written to you about some of the, the outstanding growth that we had seen, but also wanted to show you the areas where we have a little bit of growth still to go. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to information items. Ms. Holly Strogan will transfer from a building secretary at the Actuary Intermediate School to a building secretary at the Actuary Middle School effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Treasurers report that the Actuary Board of School Directors approved the general fund for period ending May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, yeah, I just had questions that, um, I might have missed something, but if I missed it, maybe somebody else would wonder too. There was a May eighth HR consulting that, we've talked about some of the HR things that are on, but I wasn't sure what consulting we've had so far from the CCIU for HR consulting on May eighth. Was it kind of delayed or?
Ms. Metzler, I don't know, we'll have to look at what the bill was. Thank you, though, we'll, we'll, we'll get the information, send it back out to the board.
Okay. The other one, also on May eighth, was Tripoli Communications for contingency. I wasn't sure if we had, that had come up before. If you have a contingency, I'm not sure what that is or what that bill is for Tripoli.
Um, I, I don't, I don't have that bill to know, but I'll, I'll look. We, we had a contract with her, but it was mostly based on the work that she did. I know she did some work with the CTE program, but I'll have to look and see what that was.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the HR consulting was eighty thousand dollars. So I'm, if I'm not familiar with what that was, I guess I hesitate to approve it without some knowledge of what the consultation was paying the CCIU that eighty thousand.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Oppose?
I'll oppose.
Motion passes. Business managers report. Mr. Furlong, thank you.
Yes, we ask the Actuary Board of School Directors to approve the list of bill for payment for a total of three million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
Need a motion?
So move.
All those in, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For the recommended action items this evening, just so everybody's aware, A and B will be a roll call. Correct, Ms. Hardy?
Correct.
So I'll read them again. A, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six general fund budget expenditures in the amount of sixty-six million, five hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Need a motion?
I don't remember. Sorry.
Any discussion?
Ms. Metzler.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. Prickett.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Coniker.
Yes.
Eight yes, one absent.
Item B, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the resolution establishing a millage rate, establishing a real estate millage rate of forty-three point four six mils in Chester County and twenty-five point nine four mils in Lancaster County. Need a motion? Any discussion?
Ms. Prickett. Yes. Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Coniker.
Yes.
Mr. Jurkic.
Yes.
Ms. Metzler.
Yes.
Eight yes, one absent.
Thank you. Last week, we covered items C through double E and I didn't notice any changes in between. So we need a motion to accept items C through double E.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion on any of those? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? C through double E, passes. FF, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the lease agreement with the YMCA of the Brandywine Valley effective July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty thirty, with a base rent of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seven cents, increasing three percent each January during the term of the agreement. Need a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. GG, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the Ed Insight Renewal for Data Management effective July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six at a cost of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. HH, that the Actuary Board of School Directors accept the following grants. Nine thousand, four hundred dollars from the DocStater Foundation for the Outroom, Outdoor Classroom. Three hundred thousand dollars from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the solar array. Need a motion?
I don't remember.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. II, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the following policies, second reading. Three seventeen, conduct slash disciplinary procedures. Three seventeen point one, educator misconduct. Three twenty, freedom of speech by employees. Seven eighteen, service animals in school. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. JJ, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the proposal with McClure Company for the chiller replacement at the Actuary Primary Learning Center at a cost of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. KK, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the quote with STS Innovative Interiors for Furniture for the Autism Support Rooms at the Actuary Primary Learning Center at a cost of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Need a motion?
So move.
Got that, Jill? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. LL, that the Actuary Board of School Directors approve the quote with Corbett Inc. for Computer Lab Furniture at the Actuary Area High School at a cost of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and six cents. Need a motion?
I don't want.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Motion passes. It's starting to get like Sam was saying. MM, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the quote with Highway Equipment and Supply Company for the purchase of a Takuchi track loader at a cost of $67,512.24. Need a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. NN, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the proposal with Franklin Flooring, Incorporated for carpet replacement in the Actra Area High School offices at a cost of Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. OO, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the proposal with McClure Company for chiller maintenance for a five-year total cost of $73,376. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. PP, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the quotes with Aluminum Athletic Equipment Company for pole vault pads and covers at a cost, at a total cost of $28,701. Need a motion? Any discussion?
Just to note that this was, most of this cost, I don't know the exact reimbursement from the insurance company, but it was covered by insurance from the windstorm earlier this year.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. QQ, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the guaranteed energy savings agreement with McClure Company at a cost of $2,277,729. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. RR, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the donation of used furniture to West Fallowfield Christian School at an approximate value of $13,300. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. SS, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the agreement with Pro Access for Boiler Maintenance at a cost of $3,090. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. TT, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the quote with United Door and Hardware for the purchase and installation of cafeteria doors at the Actra Area High School at a cost of $30,840. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. UU, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the insurance proposal with MGI Risk Management at a cost of $259,530. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Can you give a quick explanation of that, please?
Yeah, this is our, this is our insurance coverage for the district. It's an, it's an annual recurring cost. This, this represents a 5% increase, which I guess we should feel good about, only 5%, but nonetheless, this is insurance. We, we did expand in the, in the last two years, we've expanded our insurance, not a significant amount to cover additional things that were not covered. Some of that would be Title IX, coming into compliance with Title IX and which sports are covered. So all of this is, is really, I think, money well spent to minimize the risk of the district for insurance.
Thank you. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. VV, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the service agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for Human Resources Generalist Services effective June 23, 2025 through August 22, 2025. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. WW, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the service agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for a Director of Human Resources on Assignment effective June 16, 2025 through October 30, 2025. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. XX, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the services agreement with Lancaster General Medical Group for physician services for the year 2025-2026. 2026-2027. 2027-2028, school years, with an annual fee of $8,000 per year. Need a motion? Any discussion?
Dr. Eck gets great reviews from our community. We're, we're glad to have him and are working with our kids.
Thank you. All, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. YY, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the Athletic Training Services Agreement with Lancaster General Medical Group for Athletic Training Services for the 2025-2026, 2026-2027, 2027-2028, school years, with an annual fee of $80,000, $82,400, and $84,800, respectively. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I'm guessing we got the issues worked out, that we're doing a three-year contract.
Has been a very good.
All right.
Has been a very good year and the, the big change, we really have struggled to fill that part-time, and so this reflects an additional service, but is going to serve our community a lot better. So yeah, it's been, it's been, not without a few bumps, but we're doing great.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. ZZ, that the Actra Board of School Directors authorizes the superintendent slash interim superintendent of schools to make hiring decisions that allow for district employees to begin employment during the months of July and August at the discretion of the superintendent, interim superintendent, with the Board of Directors ratifying the employment hire during the subsequent Board of Directors meeting. Need a motion?
So moved.
Can you say that a lot more simply, just to, to everyone understands?
Yeah. So, um, the, the, one of the things that, that we encounter in the summer, really it's between July and August, that if we have, traditionally, we would experience some teacher movement in, in, you know, late in the summer, and we would have to have new teachers that we hire come into an induction session, you know, two or three days before the board has even approved them. And so what we're not looking to do is to do anything that's outside of what would be our normal operations, and it would be our intention of keeping the board informed of those things that are happening. We're not trying to secure new contracts. I can't, it, the best example is a teacher that we have to hire and ask them to start before we've actually approved them. But those would be, those would be communications from the superintendent to the board to let them know that that's happening. This, we kind of routinely do without this, when we, we hire somebody and give a retroactive date, and so that's, it's essentially the same thing. This just makes it a little more clear that the superintendent, it's okay to do this, but naturally, we want to make sure the board understands those things as they're happening. So if we hire somebody August 1st and they're beginning something, the board would be notified that this is happening, but they're not going to be approved until the, the second meeting in August.
My only addition to the conversation is I, I think we need to, I, I also wish you had brought this up last week, so you had a chance to digest it a little bit before it's on the agenda. I think there also needs to be some, some sort of protections in there or some sort of framework. This is sort of open-ended, if you will, and I don't know how you envision if something were to come up that's out of the ordinary, that you just hire them and then without having some understanding that the board has, like, 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 for instance, like, I would like to know, do you, like, do you have, at this moment, do you know a list of positions that this could potentially fill, so that, that, so that stays inside that scope, and that anything above a certain step in scale requires going to the personnel committee for approval, you know, if, you know, some superstar teacher you want to hire. I think that protects everybody from potential issues going forward, so I, I, I think it would be neat if we could have sort of tailored that, to have a little more clarity for it.
Yeah, well, we can amend it to run things through committees prior to approval, because, I mean, committees can't make decisions, it's just being known. Like, I, I'm, I don't want to put it out into the universe, water system.
Yeah.
You know, that something would happen, that we would have to, you know, expend a lot of money to have somebody come and fix something. That's the, it's really an emergency-type situation. It's, it should not be our routine business. It should be something that comes up, and so, yeah, my suggestion is we run, we, we send in a minimum communication to the committees, but I also think the full board should know, because they're ultimately the ones that are, that are voting on it. So, yeah, it, 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 it's not uncommon for boards to do this, and it's, it's new, and I just wanted to make sure that in our transition to an interim, that we weren't missing things. So the communication's key, but you're, you're right, Brian. I don't, I don't disagree that some guardrails would be good.
Thank you.
Good discussion. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. AA, triple A, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the list of salaries for district employees for the 2025-2026 school year. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Triple B, that the Actra Board of School Directors approve the payment of 75% up to $3,000 per student for the students who are attending the Physics Fight Club International Tournament in July. Need a motion? Any discussion?
That's two students this year.
Thanks for the clarification. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Triple C, that the Actra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Matt Furlong as Assistant Business Manager effective August 10, 2025. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll, I'll have some comments about Matt's work a little bit later in the agenda. It's a sad day.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Triple D, that the Actra Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Ms. Samantha Dash as a special education teacher at the Actra Primary Learning Center effective June 10, 2025. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the Policy Committee Report. Ms. Metzler?
Yes, thank you. We met this evening in this room at 6:00 PM. We did a second reading on policies that were included in tonight's agenda. We are going through a process of reviewing policies, beginning with oldest reviewed, to catch us up to date on just like a cycle review. So that has us at Policy 102, which is our academic standards. Thank you to Dr. Flojo, who had looked into that, and because they come from the state, it's not something that we review, it's in that policy to, that the board would review the standards, but when they come from the state, there's nothing to vote on, but she will make sure to give us updates if an update should come from the state. On Policy 105.1, the review of instructional materials by parents, guardians, and students, there's an annual notice that's included in there. That is on the website. If parents want to see, there's a whole list of annual notices that are on the website, and we talked about maybe having communication come out in the fall that gives families a link to that page that includes all of those notices. 105.2 is exemption from instruction. We talked about just keeping up to date with communication on the front end of any, you know, new assemblies or anything that's coming, so it does give parents and guardians a chance to request the exemption from the instruction, as in line with this policy. And finally, it was 106 on curriculum maps, which, another thanks to Dr. Flojo for doing significant work on this as a project to move all of this over to Atlas. That will be happening over the summer, and then at the September Education Committee, a presentation about those updates, and that will be more user-friendly, it will be easily updated, and easy to view all those curriculum maps as well. So, big thanks. That's all we had for the Policy Committee tonight.
Thank you. Next is the Finance Committee Report. Finance Committee met earlier this evening in this room, went over just a handful of items, as we've done the last few months, or for a while now. We went over the May 2025 financial results, basically comparing where we were in 2024 to where we are now in 2025. A slight increase in spending, mostly due to building maintenance and spending the remaining ESAR funds, or part of the remaining ESAR funds. But we are basically on target to spend the budgeted amount, so things are looking good as far as the budget goes. Next, we did a review of the 2025-2026 budget. Dr. Lever gave us an update, reviewed some of the priorities, and I didn't list them all, but such as, I reviewed staffing levels, cost per pupil, and some other benefit costs. One of the big issues is that, obviously, the school has to approve their budget before the state does, so that state portion of, of what they give us is always somewhat of an unknown. There are some anticipated revenue increases. We're using grants to offset, or the possibility of using grants to offset certain projects in the future, looking out at what grants are available from the competitive side to make sure we're in line for those. There was a quick discussion, a review of the rebalancing, because the district is two counties, Chester County and Lancaster County, and as Mr. Norris noted, as a, as a board, we did not increase taxes, but the millage rates were affected basically by the, the assessment values in each county. That's kind of a decision that's out of our hands, but that happens every year. We have no control over that. Last couple items, as we noted earlier, the MGI Risk Management Insurance Proposal, that's a year-to-year, a yearly thing we have to go through. As Dr. Lever mentioned, a slight increase in the price, but seems like a good deal. Last but not least, sponsorship of high school, national or international competition and trips. We just talked about the International Physics Club, but administration is preparing a document we'll review in July, how to maybe open that up to other groups next school year. So that was it for the Finance Committee. Questions? Next, CCIU Board Rep Report. Mr. Norris?
Yeah, we met at the IU back on May 21st. Some of the highlights of the meeting, we got a quick review of the horticulture
Some of the highlights of the meeting, we got a quick review of the Horticulture Instructor, or the program did a terrific presentation down at the Philadelphia Flower Show. It went really well with terrific reviews. We also, Dr. Gene McCarthy, the Director of our, the, the CCIU's Virtual, Virtual Academy, went over the benefits of their wellness check-ins for virtual programs. It's a new pro- program pilot that was launched in January this year, which the goals of that are to enhance the student engagement, provide emotional and academic support, and build stronger connections between the students and the staff. So that, that's going well, and that will be continued. We also did a, heard about a brief, the Recruiting Consortium and how well it's doing in recruiting teachers for, across the, across the county. In, in particular, they're, they're focusing on special education needs in the county, K through twelve, and then helping the whole way through certification and post-bacleat programs. So that, that's going terrific. Other than that, it was just usual business as ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the next meeting is Wednesday night.
Thank you. Any old business? Don't see any listed. New business? I'll take a shot at each one of these. Now that we are back to a full board of nine, due to the, the recent resignations, we have two, at least two, open positions on the Finance Committee, and we have one open position on the Education Committee. So when we get back together, I'll send out an email to the, to the board. When we get back together in July, maybe we can have appointments, full appointments for every committee, unless someone would like to volunteer for something right now. I guess we could open the floor. If not, we'll, we can do it in July. Also, next item there, discussion to appoint vacant Vice President seat at the July Board Meeting, again, due to a recent resignation. We currently do not have a Vice President, which, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is not required. But I, I think it's something we've, we've done. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norris, we've done that for years. So in case the President cannot be here, or for whatever reason, it'd be good to have that. So we can have that discussion in July also. Well, that's going to happen soon, though. Other items and announcements?
Just that, you know, one of those, one of those approvals tonight is our, is our auditorium roof. And that will be starting in, here before the end of the month. Much needed. More expensive than we had anticipated, which seems to be a theme with anything you build these days. But I think it, I think we, we are really getting at the root of the problem, which has been an ongoing leaking issue. Which means that this also opens the opportunity to do some upgrades inside in the, in the coming years. So thank you to the board, thank you for, to Jim Durrow and Scott Domwoods for their work in kind of pursuing this and trying to figure out why the issue is what it is. Thanks to McClure and to EI in helping to sort through that. So I'm, I'm glad to see that project get started.
Moving on to visitors' comments in general. Ding-dong. Administrator comments or announcements?
I would like to thank all of our teachers, counselors, and administrators that participated in professional learning last week and this week. We had a really great group and everything, everything went very well, and we had a lot of great interactions and collaboration. So thank you to everyone for taking time out of your summer to participate.
I just wanted to thank Tara Mar- Tara Murdoch and the CTE staff. They facilitated a great on-campus field trip for our kindergarten students at the end of May. And I would also like to thank Sandy and Chris Wrigley. Sandy has been our PTO President for the past couple of years, and she's been very active in the PTO. And she just let us know that she will be kind of passing the torch. So we just want to thank Sandy and her husband, Chris, for all the work that they've done and really just creating a really strong parent-teacher organization. So thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board, those of you that were able to make it to commencement. What a, what a wonderful evening. Sorry I wasn't here last week to, to talk about this, but just a great night. And I'm grateful that, for your presence, I, I think we, we made the right call again on, on the weather, luckily, at last minute, and it turned out to be a wonderful, wonderful evening. So thank you to that, another, another class on, destined to do great things. I pleased to report, I got my pictures from the valedictorians and some nice emails of them eating cereal out of their bowl. But I also wanted to say thank you to the teachers that have participated in, in our professional development. Last week was a, a really good week for our administrative team, working with our teachers as we prepare for, for next year. And, and then lastly, just on behalf of the, the principals in particular, I just want to say to Mr. Furlong, thank you for, for everything you've done for Actuera. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we wish you continued success where you go.
I'm going to jump on that train. I want to publicly, personally thank Matt Furlong for all he has done for me, all the help he has given me these past couple of years. He is a wealth of knowledge. He has never hesitated to say, hey, I'll take that from you. I know you're overwhelmed. And quite frankly, behind the scenes, people don't realize how much Matt does to keep this district going. So I want to publicly thank you, Matt, very much for all you've done for me and for the district.
Yeah. Well, well said, Joanne. People, people don't understand what Mr. Furlong does for the district. You know, it's interesting, Matt, in the, the two years I got to work with you, I learned one thing. You're not often wrong. And people will come to me and they'll say, I, I'm pretty sure they made a mistake. And what I've learned is, I, I'm not so sure that, that, that Matt's made a mistake. This is right down to our district solicitor that one time made a case. And, and I, I went back to, to Mr. Furlong, and he explained it. And I took it back to the solicitor, and the solicitor came back with an opinion that agreed with Mr. Furlong. And that was the day that I stopped questioning what Matt told me. So Matt really does, he's, he's a tremendous accountant, tremendous accountant. His ability to pull information quickly, have it be accurate, and, and also at the same time be very honest. I, I don't, I don't know that I can get that very quickly. I don't, I don't, and yet, he does so many things. He's been so helpful in his fifteen years. He's served in HR functions, he's served in business office functions. And even though he might have done something in HR years ago, exactly what, what Joanne says is, is what he does. He's willing to step up and, you know, he'll, he'll admit that it's been a long time, but he, he always, always goes the extra mile. So County Stogge Valley is, they've done very well in hiring Matt Furlong. And Matt, we're sorry to see you go, but we wish you well. And thank you for all of the time and the service that you've, you've given to our community. With that, this is, this is my last formal meeting with the board. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time at the Actuera School District. I couldn't be prouder of the progress that we've made in so many areas. And I couldn't be more terrified of all the work that's still to do. There's, there's always a lot of work when you're in an organization like a school system. And the one thing I want to say is to our, our leadership that are here, you guys have done good work. You've put good things in place. Now we need to persevere, and we just need to stay on those tasks, because you are engaging in the right work. And there will be a leader here in the interim that is going to encourage you to continue to do that. And then you'll have a new leader, and that, that leader will take you to even further heights. And I just encourage you to, to continue to do the good work that you're doing, and on behalf of the kids and the families of Actuera. So it's been my pleasure to serve.
Thank you. Our next board comments. Any board comments? No? Well, if nobody else, I'd like to take a minute. As Dr. Lever just said, this is his last formal meeting. From day one, he has worked tirelessly for the students and parents of this district to make Actuera a better place. He and the entire administrative team have put systems and programs in place that keep us pointed toward our vision, empowering students to build successful futures. And like he's told us many times, if you keep that as your focus, things tend to work out. So as, as much as we were very surprised in April, when he announced his resignation, we certainly wish you well as you begin the next chapter of your career as the Director of Career and Customized Technical Education at the IU. So thank you for all you've done for us. So enough mushy stuff, we'll move on. Announce the following meetings. Policy Finance, Policy and Finance Committee Meetings, Monday, June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, six PM in the Middle School Multipurpose Room. We had an executive session for Legal, Personnel, and Safety, Monday, June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, prior to the regular meeting in Room one oh two at the middle school. And we're going to have a brief follow-up on legal? Personnel. A brief follow-up executive session for personnel after the regular meeting in Room one oh two of the middle school. Policy Facility Policy and Finance Committee Meeting, Monday, July twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, six PM in the Middle School Multipurpose Room. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, same night, Monday, July twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, seven PM in the Middle School Multipurpose Room. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.